Good evening. It's 7:00 PM. I am the Deputy Town Clerk, Margie Tachi. Before we get started, I have a few announcements. Tonight's regularly scheduled Herndon Town Council work session is a virtual meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3708.2 as amended, the Governor's executive orders as amended and in accordance with Ordinance 20-0-23, Continuity of Governmental Operations During Pandemic Disaster COVID-19, as amended and readopted by the Herndon Town Council on September 8th, 2020, which supersedes previously adopted ordinances, or excuse me, amendments. Proper notice of the electronic meeting provided in accordance with the Virginia Code. Agenda meeting materials along with information for viewing the meeting and submitting comments for the record are available on the town's website. The meeting will begin with a roll call to determine a quorum and all votes, including adjournment, will be by roll call. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Margie. I will call our October 6th Town Council work session to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll and ask my colleagues to state your name and that you are present when you are called upon.
Town Manager.
Ashton, present.
Town Attorney.
Yates, present.
Olem.
Present.
Baker.
Baker, present.
Delagula.
Delagula, present.
DeCall.
DeCall is present.
Friedrichs.
Friedrichs, present.
McKenna.
McKenna is present.
Merkel.
Merkel is present. So for the record, there is a quorum electronically, and we can get right to it. We'll start with comments from the Town Manager this evening. Do you have any comments on the, I guess, on the emergency or just in general?
Yeah, this is Bill Ashton, Town Manager. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a few items. Late last week, I sent to you, and I know Ann Curtis has now forwarded on to the General Herndon Community, Halloween guidance that is coming out, actually out of the State Department of Health through the Fairfax County Department of Health. I encourage all parents to go to our social media pages, review that guidance to help you make your decisions on how you intend to celebrate Halloween. Other than that, just the numbers continue to be, Northern Virginia continue to be doing fairly well. It is, we are probably doing better than other parts of the state. Right now, the state numbers, the drivers are out of southwestern Virginia, which is actually interesting because that is much less densely populated than northern Virginia, obviously. But the things that we are doing seem to be having an effect. So as I often like to remind at times like this, please mask up, please wash your hands, stay home if you're sick, and socially distance and stay six feet apart when you can possibly do so. These things are working according to Dr. Gloria and as we see in the numbers. I think northern Virginia has been much more observant of that than elsewhere, and I really truly attribute what's been going on to our observance of those health guidelines. Other than that, that's all I have. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Do any of my colleagues have questions for the Town Manager at this time? Anybody? Okay, so seeing none, I will ask the Town Clerk if we have received any comments for the record or any transactional disclosure declarations from council on any of tonight's items.
No, Madam Mayor. I have not received any comments for the record or any disclosures from council on any items listed on the agenda this evening.
Okay, thank you so much. There are no public hearings on the agenda this evening, so we'll move straight into general items. The first item is Ordinance 20055 to amend Chapter 10 Building and Building Regulations, Article 2 Standard Sections 10 through 21, which is Adoption of Statewide Building Code to Update Language to Accommodate Adoption of Future Additions. And I'll recognize the Town Attorney for our staff report, Ms. Yates.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This particular amendment is in the form of a housekeeping amendment updating. The Commonwealth of Virginia many decades ago adopted the Uniform Statewide, what is known as the Uniform Statewide Building Code, which is essentially a nationwide code. This adoption of the amendment or incorporation into the town code has been in this Section 10-21 for many years. However, at the time it was adopted, it stated an addition of the code, 2009, I believe, that has long since been replaced by several other additions. The Code of Virginia allows localities to adopt the current addition of the code and any subsequent amendments. So I believe that the language that is before you this evening for adoption next week clarifies that it is the current addition without stating a year and any future additions. As well as, we specify in the language that's before you that a copy of the Uniform Statewide Building Code is available in the office of the building official, which is on the second floor of the Herndon Municipal Center. And John Orison is our building official. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any questions for the Town Attorney on this item? Ms. Friedrichs.
Quick one. Do we also have this online, the copy of the most recent version?
I believe we do, but that is also anticipated if we don't. I do believe there's a link. I will check while we're conducting the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? Madam Vice Mayor.
Speaking. So, Madam Town Attorney, does this mean, should the General Assembly make another change in 2021? Then we don't have to go back and rewrite everything?
It's adopted. It's adopted in its entirety with this amendment.
This language saves us a lot of staff time as well because that means we're updated without having to go back and do all the...
I think it's, yes, I think it's clear what we're doing.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions for the Town Attorney on this item? Anybody? Okay. So with concurrence of council, I ask that we, if we can put this on consent for next week? Is there any objection to that? All right. Oh, I love all the thumbs up. Okay. Next up is Ordinance 20056 to amend Chapter 66, which is Street Sidewalks in Certain Other Public Places, Article 2 Street Excavations to Develop Standards for Utility Distribution or Transmission Polls and to Establish a Maximum Fee for Administrative Review Eligible Projects. And I believe our zoning administrator, David Stromberg, is here for the staff report. Hi, David.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Merkel, members of council. I'm David Stromberg, the zoning administrator. Although I'm not in front of you for a zoning text amendment, I'm here for a town code amendment. If you'll all remember, back in January of this year, we did pass the zoning text amendment for the small cell that the General Assembly passed a few years ago, and the localities were required to go ahead and adopt ordinances for that. The zoning amendments regulated small cell private property, and we had mentioned then that if there would be a companion bill that would regulate small cell proposals on public property, so in the right of way. And so this is that companion bill. It was separated a bit again because of the pandemic. It doesn't, the state didn't leave localities too much ability to regulate, but in the event if we do have to deny application, this just gets that framework there in the town code if that's necessary. And again, the town has received a number of applications already. None of them have been approved yet, but again, we do have a number in right now. And the other thing is this does allow us to charge the $500 application fee. Where under the current language and the ordinance, when these come in, the town is only getting about $150 for the application fee. So still not covering staff time, but it is a bit of an improvement and the most that we're allowed to charge for an application unto the state. If they have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you. What questions do we have for Mr. Stromberg? Anyone? Ms. Friedrichs?
Does this supersede any regulation that we already have, or is this a completely new situation?
We have some general submission requirements for right-of-way permits, but there really wasn't too much in the town code. So this really lays everything out there. There's a lot of new language in there for it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on this item? Okay. Thank you. Next up is Ordinance 20057 to amend Chapter 26, Article 2, Section 26-24, which is Tree Removal on Private Property to Clarify Town Actions Consistent with State Code. And I'll recognize our Town Attorney for the staff report.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. This amendment is necessary again to clarify current language that was in our code in Section 2624 and to provide consistency with new language with the state code enabling law. This amendment clarifies that the town's authority on private property applies only when a dead tree or a distressed tree is a, constitutes a hazard to public property, life or hazard. It clarifies the owner, means the property owner. It clarifies that consistent with state law, the remedy that the town has in the event a property owner fails to remove the tree is to seek an injunction through the Circuit Court of Fairfax County ordering the removal of the tree on private property. A violation of this section for failing to remove a tree is a misdemeanor punishable by a $250 fine, and that's pursuant to Town Code Section 2626 and Section 114. It also clarifies that a homeowner that has been given a notice to remove or trim a diseased or dead tree has an appeal to the town manager, not the town council. I'm sure you'll be happy about that. But I think that the amendments just further clarify language that was already in the code. We did make a couple of deletions of language that was inconsistent with state code regarding when we could go on people's property to remove trees. And I will be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. What questions do we have? That window's popped up everywhere. I can't see everybody. Okay, what questions do we have? Mr. DeCall.
I think you're muted, Councilmember DeCall.
I'm sorry. This is Councilmember DeCall. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can.
Okay, Madam Attorney, there was a question by a resident, if you remember, maybe a month back, couple of months back, asking to remove a tree within a private property. And if I remember correctly, because of the code, we were not able to execute that request. So with this, with the adoption of this ordinance, will we be able to take care of those requests now going forward? I just wanted to understand how, you know, where we stand with the adoption of this ordinance. If you remember that, you know, a couple of emails we received, yeah.
I do remember that situation, and it prompted my review of this very code section and, which resulted in the discovery of the language which was not consistent with state code enabling authority. The homeowner was asking us to remove a tree that they felt, a tree that was contained on private property that was not a public hazard or danger to life publicly. And we could not go on private property to remove a tree pursuant to state law that is not constituting a public danger or hazard. What this language does is clarifies so that citizens are not asking us to come on their property and remove the neighbor's tree that they believe is causing a problem on their property. What this allows us to do, and I'll have all, what state law allows us to do, is go on, is serve notices on property owners whose trees are creating public hazards or to either property or life. So I think it would have, this would help clarify for that particular homeowner that we cannot do what they were asking us to do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the Town Attorney on this item? Anybody? Mr. Delagula followed by Ms. Friedrichs.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Delagula. I know it's redundant, but just got to ask that the Town Manager agreed to take on this burden?
I believe that's a question for me, Madam Mayor.
Certainly.
It's part of the job, is how I would characterize it.
Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
All good.
Thank you. Ms. Friedrichs.
I know what I'm saying is going to sound pretty redundant as well, but I just want to clarify because I think the Town Attorney's very formal language is sometimes a little difficult. So what we're saying is, we had something in the code that we're technically not allowed to do, so we're moving it from the code so nobody thinks we're going to do it.
So nobody thinks that we can do it. Yes, we're clarifying that.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other questions for the Town Attorney? Okay, thank you very much. And, okay, so our next item is Resolution 20G46 to Ratify an Extension of Lease Pursuant to Ordinance 20023, Continuity of Government Operations as Amended Between the Town and Eldon Street Players, and I'll recognize Lacey Yates once again for the staff report.
Thank you. Eldon Street Players, otherwise known as Next Stop, currently leases 1,275 square feet of space for rehearsal purposes in the building that the town owns at 397 Herndon Parkway. Consistent with other town leases of town space, similar leases of town space, the rent is a dollar per lease term, which is per year. The current lease that Next Stop has for this property for rehearsal will expire on October 14th. This extension of lease extends the current lease for one year under the same terms, so that it will expire next year on October 14th. Town Manager pursuant to his continuity of government powers has signed this lease, and we're asking next week that Town Council consider ratification of the extension of lease for the one year pursuant to the existing terms.
Thank you. Are there any questions on this item? Pretty straightforward. Okay, thank you very much. And finally, we have another, Resolution 20G47 to Ratify an Extension of Lease Pursuant to our COG Ordinance as Amended Between the Town and the Fairfax County Board of Supervisors, and this is Lacey Yates once again.
Thank you. This lease is for Supervisor Faust's space over at the same building, 397. He leases, or the Board of Supervisors for him, leases office space over there. Again, consistent with similar types of leases. The rent for the space is $1 per year. The current lease here will expire on November 11th of this year. This extension of lease extends the current lease again for one more year into November 11th, 2021. Pursuant to the continuity of government powers extended to the Town Manager. He signed this extension of lease, and we are asking that the council consider ratification of the lease extending this term, another year through November 11th of 2021. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions on this item? Okay. Thank you. And if it's, if there's concurrence of council, I'd like to put these two leases on consent for next week. Does that work for everybody? Okay, awesome. Thank you. That brings us to Roundtable. Who would like to start us off? Anybody? Pradeep.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just wanted to bring some concerns of public interest. I was locking a few doors, talking to the residents, and, you know, I just wanted to bring that to the council as well as to the staff, that the parking issue in the town has become more difficult than before because we, wherever I went, I saw a lot of cars, especially construction vehicles parked on the street. And, you know, a lot of residents had concern over that. And also what we found is many of those, not all of those again, many of those are actually parked there and people go to some other jurisdiction and then come back on Monday, park their vehicle, private vehicle there, and take those, you know, construction vehicles from there. So it has been a routine. And on top of that, there is a lot of, you know, littering issue as well, beer bottles and all those things, you know, on the corner where it is hidden by the car. People are, you know, doing that. And I have seen that in quite a places and wanted to bring this question here because what can we do to make sure, you know, obviously, we want to make sure our residents have enough parking space there, but at the same time, we don't want people to park their construction vehicles here and then go to some other places and then come back again and then, you know, do the rituals. So how can we differentiate, you know, maybe we can think of a process to differentiate, this is the residence car, this is non-residence car, you know? So I think that issue is becoming bigger and bigger every year. And I think we have to start analyzing the issue and coming up with the right solution. So obviously, residents do not feel that their parking space is taken away. And at the same time, you know, people do not abuse the parking spaces we have in the town of Herndon. So this is something I wanted to throw out here for discussion and also, you know, for how the council feels about that and also, you know, how, maybe for the staff also to do some more analysis on that one. That's one of the issues I wanted to bring it. And also, another thing is, you know, I have seen a lot of local jurisdiction now going, like using their social media channel through their town or city channel and going, you know, live stream for their public hearing as well as work session. And I think this is something we can also consider or discuss about because we want more public input, more engagement. Obviously, there are pros and cons in using social media. We can certainly, you know, find out what is the best way to go. But I think for more public engagement on top of TV, which is already there, I think this is time to think about. Obviously, there are some legal perspective, compliance perspective, logistic perspective we have to think about. But I think my ask here is obviously, you know, it's how the council decides, but I think we have to start using our social media channels, town's official social media channel to start, you know, live streaming our work session and public hearing so people actually participate more and understand the process, you know, how we, what, not just what decision we make, but how we actually reach to that decision. They can, they can see how actually the sausage is cooked here. So those two things I wanted to bring into council's, you know, notice. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you for bringing that forward. I think probably both of those things need staff to give some attention to before we have a real robust discussion. But if there's anything that anybody wants to chime in about, we would welcome that. Mr. McKenna.
Yeah, just real quick, we, when I was on council 20 years ago, my mile-square town was split in half by a railroad. I think not just maybe the communities that we have, but with the metro coming, one of the things I had to worry about, you know, over Missouri Avenue, one of the things that we did to mitigate the parking because people weren't paying for parking going into New York was to give parking passes to areas of places specifically residents, and if they weren't there, they were, you know, they would get tickets. And, you know, the residents would have parking passes. They actually were, you know, railroad themed, so they would go on the mirrors. That might be something considered as well, you know, because I do know when the metro does come, you know, Missouri Avenue, some other places might have some parking issues. And I think people will try and park close there. So this might be a great way to kind of do a beta project, you know, in regards to something. I mean, obviously, this has to be vetted by staff, but this is something I went through 19 years ago, and it was pretty successful.
Yeah, I think we have a couple of mechanisms that we might be able to employ. We just need to look into the issues a little more deeply, and especially if metro ever does open. Got my fingers crossed we'll have to solve that problem. Thank you. Signee, were you responding to Pradeep or were you ready for Roundtable?
I was responding to Pradeep. As far as the parking is concerned, I mean, what he has raised is something that people have been raising ever since I've been on council and long before it. And I've accidentally set off a tsunami of recrimination myself by mentioning it periodically. But as far as Bill's suggestion, Bill McKenna's suggestion is concerned, could we, we got rid of the Herndon sticker to, for the purpose of making collection of vehicle taxes easier. But as soon as we did that, everybody said, oh, it's great that we don't have vehicle, you know, that we don't have to get those stickers. But I think now people are seeing the downside. So I like, I like Bill's thought on that matter. But I wonder if, I'm pretty sure there are some legal reasons why our streets are not exclusively ours, or are they? I don't know. So I definitely see that the town would need to, that perhaps the Town Attorney would need to address the question of what exactly kinds of parking restrictions can we put for Herndon residents versus other northern Virginia or Fairfax County residents? And then, you know, we run into the issue of, should we just have two spaces per resident? Or something like that? Because when we had to restrict parking over an Old Hunt Way, we ran into a lot of legal issues. So not bad, just, you know, a lot of regulations that we had to think about. So I understand what you're saying, Mr. DeCall, but I've run into it a bunch of times myself, and we've never, we haven't made a definitive decision. And I do think this is becoming more and more important. Thanks.
Mr. Town, wait, Mr. Town Manager, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Bill Ashton, Town Manager. Just to add a finer point on this discussion. There are a couple of issues raised. The first one, Mr. DeCall raised regarding the construction vehicles and various other things. We were looking at that pre-COVID. We had the Herndon Police working with Lisa Yates, our Town Attorney, to look at ways in which we could try to address some of those issues, and then COVID hit. And we, that kind of got shelved for a little bit. We will be bringing it back. It's something that we have started looking at. It's something that I often say that if the parking problems in town magically went away tomorrow, you probably wouldn't need a Town Manager anymore. I hear about this, I hear about it as well as you all. So we are sensitive to that. We are going to work on that. Now, item number two is the metro. If you recall, when we revamped, we totally re-engineered the residential parking permit program for Old Hunt Way regarding the high school problem, but my mind's eye was always on metro. We were doing it for there initially. We wanted to establish a system that's flexible enough for us to overlay on Missouri. And I would venture to say, unfortunately, even in my neighborhood, two blocks from here, where there's a pathway back into the current TRG, which then crosses the street into metro. I have, some of my neighbors will be affected here shortly. So when we were designing that system, it was to be for us to lay additional zones for metro. And regarding the sticker, and I think there was a question raised about, you know, can we use the sticker to restrict parking? Yes, the streets are ours. The town maintains them. We own them. However, under state code, they are public streets. And we cannot delineate to that level that townspeople could park here versus there. We get a little bit more latitude in state code when it comes to things that like residential parking permit programs, where you have a massive problem like that. But just on your... permit programs, where you have a massive problem like that. But just on your average street, we, we're limited in what we can do there. So I just wanted to clarify those couple of points. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Cesar, are you ready for your roundtable or chiming in?
No, Madam Mayor. I was going to chime in on Mr. DeCol's comments.
Go ahead.
Councilmember Delagula, appreciate it then. So brought up a couple of things there, and I got to tell you, I've heard some of the same things. First of all, I want to start with the higher level one. I think the transparency issue. I think people have enjoyed the work sessions. They're available right now, online, people can see and hear. But if we ever go back, or if we ever go away from this virtual setting, people do want to see who's making the comments, the discussions going on. I mean, we may not think people want to see it, but they actually do. People do care about how we come to these decisions, and I got to tell you, it's, it has been this little bit of, you know, you're not transparent enough, you know, what are you hiding? We're not hiding anything, right? So I just think we, you know, it's probably for a later time or the next council, but I'm going to support we continue this, either publicizing the audios and videos, and let them see who's making the comments, and allow those transcripts to be available. So I think that's the first thing. The second thing is, I hear the parking thing all the time. That's just sort of a reflection of where the town is going. I had my HOA try to tell me I couldn't park my vehicles on fortnightly. I mean, you think about that, right? I mean, it's getting to that level where some people think you can enforce parking on a public street. Now, if your car's got flat tires, if it's rusting and leaking oil, then that's a different issue. But please don't make us go back to putting stickers on our cars. I don't particularly like that.
I totally agree with that.
I was happy when that thing went away. It was, I mean, if you want to have a little barcode, right, if you want to get really like creative and sort of tech savvy, make it kind of like, you know, a little bit inconspicuous. But something that's massive and says Herndon, I mean, that's just, I don't think people want that. You kind of gave them the freedom from being away from those big stickers of the town. I think it'd be hard to go back to that. And regarding the metro and parking on that end, I completely agree. I mean, but I don't know how we fix that. And I'm open to any ideas, but I'm hearing that consistently when I'm talking to folks out there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. But does anyone else want to chime in before we move on? Ms. Olem?
Yes, this is Olem speaking. Yeah, I remember when the parking issue happened at Old Hunt Way, and we, I do believe Mr. Town Manager gave you the authority of other neighborhoods in the future with the metro. They just work it out with our town manager, and they don't have to come to a public hearing. So I think that's, that's done. But another issue, the construction vehicles being parked in neighborhoods. Prior to my getting on council, I believe I was on the BZA, and I got given credit for that, which I said, no, the BZA doesn't legislate. We uphold legislation. That was your town council. But you did have something put on the books, so that you didn't have a lot of these working vehicles in neighborhoods. And people had to park them either in a garage or in the back of their home and so forth. And I have noticed that we are not enforcing that like we used to. So I think that's already on the books, unless we turned around and took that off the books. Just a comment on the construction type vehicles.
Okay, thank you. So who would like to go next for roundtable? Ms. Baker?
Councilmember Baker. So I just want to weigh in, kind of on a variation of the second part of Pradeep's comments, specifically to public hearings and us meeting in person again. I know this is brought up before, I'm going to bring it up again, that I do think, you know, lots of other jurisdictions in the state, and certainly in other places, are meeting in person. I think there is a safe way for us to meet in person. And I think what we've seen over the last six months or so that we've been doing this, is that we don't get anywhere near the level of participation on these meetings that we do when we're in person. And I just, I think it's amiss for our citizens. And we talk a lot about openness and transparency, and I think the virtual meetings are, are amiss on that. Certainly, I recognize the, the health, you know, challenges that we're facing, and that we do need to be safe, and certainly for our own health, for the health of our staff, for the health of our citizens. So certainly think work sessions need to continue to be virtual for the foreseeable future. But I do think, given the space where we can hold a public hearing, and even thinking back to that March public hearing that we did have to have in person, where we were staggered, and of course, at this point, wearing masks and having citizens wear masks. But I'd really like to see us on a path that we have that option to be in person again, because it just feels like there's no end in sight. And, you know, Virginia's on phase three of opening. I think we've all gotten really comfortable with this new situation, but it's not, it's not right, it's not fair to our citizens, and it does, it does feel like we at least need a plan or a path of when we're going to be in person again, at least for public hearings.
Thank you. Who else would like to go for their roundtable? Who would like to go next? Pradeep, you've already gone. Is there someone who, another colleague who hasn't gone yet that would like to speak?
Madam Mayor, I had a clarification on Ms. Baker's comment.
Oh, go ahead.
So my request was not to go in-person meeting. My request was, since, you know, obviously, we will definitely think about that when the situation is better. My, my request, my ask here on discussion was, you know, making this meeting more on socialist, you know, media, meaning live streaming the meetings, rather than people just watching the recorded version or watching live on TV. How about using the social media, because everybody follows social media these days, live streaming the meetings, whether now or in future, when we do in-person meeting also, making those meetings live streamed, so people can actually watch, participate, engage, and we get more feedback. So that was my, my, my main ask here, but I appreciate Councilmember Baker's comment.
Right. Well, I was just chiming in, because I know you had mentioned meetings, so I was, I recognize that our comments were different, but I was just chiming in on that. Certainly, they can live, we do live stream and have for years, the public hearings, so you're really just referring to the work sessions being live streamed.
Well, I think his suggestion is that, like, using Facebook Live and things like that, looking into the legal ramifications and, and that sort of thing. But, yeah, and I do think that, I know that the town manager has a weekly meeting, a phone meeting with all of the, his counterparts across the region, and we have one also with the elected official, the chairs, bayers and chairs, where we're all looking at data and trying to make the right decisions for that. And it's, it comes up almost every week, how to look at the data and make sure that we're making a safe decision. So I agree with you, with your comments completely. Is there, okay, who would like to go next for roundtable? Does he, Signe? Or did you? Okay. I can't keep track of who's gone, because we've all talked, so keep me informed.
I just wanted to speak in support of what Councilmember Baker said. I've been nagging for a while, and I kind of gave up, but I do feel strongly that public hearings are necessary for us to get more feedback from the citizens. As far as my roundtable conversation is concerned, I just wanted to report to you that I sat in on a Council on Foreign Relations Economic Update a few days ago, and they had the chair of, or at least some official from NASBO, which is the National Association of, gosh, what is it, State Budget Officers, and they were talking about rainy day funds. And I thought it was quite interesting. He brought up several, it was Sebastian Malaby, who's a writer, and Brian somebody, Sigretts, I believe. I thought there was a lot of really interesting information there, and they're going to send us the PowerPoint that he used, and I'm going to forward it to you all, because he said some interesting things about rainy day funds specifically, that they weren't really very much in use, and people went right through their rainy day funds during the last recession. And that, that was, that was ideal. And what, the unfortunate thing he said that happened was that some towns that had really good rainy day funds didn't use them, because they were under the impression that it was a position of power to have all that money in the bank, and they didn't want citizens to think that they were raising taxes for their, for their rainy day funds. So there's some interesting information that I'll share with you all. But I think the takeaway that they were proposing was to use it, don't, don't just keep holding on to it even though you need it, because what he said was, over the past 10 years, you know, we built up our rainy day funds again, and now we need them, now we should use them. And then when this is over, we'll build them up again. So I thought that was very interesting information. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Look forward to seeing that. Who would like to go next? Sheila?
Sheila Olem, here with Ms. Cleo, in case she gets up, so you'll know who's with me. Couple of things. Get ready, fall cleanup, yes, the 21st through the 23rd on your trash day. So that's only a couple of weeks away. Thank you, M.C., she's right here. Thank you for putting that back together, DPW, and I'm glad we're feeling safe enough, and our staff is out there taking care of business. Also, I attended the Hispanic Business Reception, which I've been going to since before I was on council, and the former chair of the chamber was the keynote speaker, Mr. Danny Vargas. And it was, he just put on the best speech. If anyone wants a copy, I'll be glad to share it with you. The U.S. Congress finally voted yes on a Hispanic museum down, down in DC. And they've been trying to get one for years, as long as I've known Danny, who's been working on this. So now they're after all the senators. So if you know senators in any other state, you don't need to call ours, Warner and Kane are right on it. But that would really be a great addition to have right here, easy for the people in Herndon to go down to, because there have been contributions to the U.S. for over 600 years. So he really gave a great history. If you want a copy, I'll be glad to forward it. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to go next? We've got Mr. McKenna, Mr. Delagula. Mr. Delagula?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and it's Councilmember Delagula. I guess the question for either the town manager or whoever this is appropriate for, I got a couple of questions regarding, we recently previously allowed some of the businesses to hold off on paying the town the previously collected meals taxes. The question is, how are we doing relative to what should have been paid, and we actually, what we actually got paid? And I guess include, you know, everything else in that, you know, as far as revenues potentially due to the town. Is that something that we can easily find or audit?
This is Bill Ashen Town Manager. Absolutely. We can get you a report on that. I will talk to Jenny about maybe having it to go out in my dispatch this week, or if not, we can talk about it at the council meeting next week. Just to clarify the point, though, even though you have restaurants that may not be remitting the meals taxes, in order to get that, that, that sort of benefit, they still have to report. So we have to see the reports. We are keeping track of all of that. We are considering those as counts receivable right now, and we will go back and get that money to later date. But we will get you a full, full picture of what that looks like.
Thank you, and that absolutely will help as we kind of close towards the crunch time and when the full impact of this thing is going to be felt. So want to know what's in the, what's in the cupboard. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McKenna, did you have anything for us? Nope. All right. Well, thank you very much. Mr. Town Manager, do you have further comments for us this evening?
Nothing more this night, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So guys, we do have a need to go into a closed meeting tonight, so I'm looking for a motion to go into closed meeting as provided under Section 2.23711A3 of the Public Virginia, to consider the disposition of publicly held real estate in the downtown where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining portion or negotiation strategy of the public body. Is there a motion?
This is Councilman McKenna. I motion, make the motion.
Baker, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to approve made by Mr. McKenna, seconded by Ms. Baker. Is there discussion on this motion? Okay, seeing none, I will ask the clerk, please call the roll.
Olem?
Olem, yes.
Baker?
Baker, yes.
Delagula?
Delagula, yes.
DeCol?
DeCol votes yes.
Friedrichs?
Friedrichs, yes.
McKenna?
McKenna, yes.
Merkel?
Merkel is yes. So that vote carries 7-0, and it is 7:46. We will take a very brief recess to give IT a chance to make the adjustments that they need to make. And I'll ask council members to mute your mics until we advise that the closed meeting has begun. Thank you very much.